This is FPG.live. From touchdowns in concerts to weddings and Christmas parades. Live video production right here in Fredericksburg, Texas. Live, local, here for you. FPG.live capturing your moment for generations to enjoy.
It's Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Gillespie County Commissioners' Court. Before we call the meeting to order, we are going to start with the invocation, and then we're going to follow that with the pledges of allegiance. Father Phil is going to lead us in the invocation this morning.
Let us pray. God, we gather as the Gillespie County Commissioners' Court. We thank you that you have called us to serve the persons and families of our county. As we gather this day, give us the grace as your stewards to understand the needs of our communities and the wisdom to plan and provide for the future. This November 27th on Thanksgiving Day, we as a country humbly will offer thanks to you for the blessings you have given to our communities and nation through the years. In our county, we thank you for the many who work in our offices and departments to provide the infrastructure administration support to serve our community. Be present to each of our county employees and keep them and their families safe. Yesterday, we in prayer and gratitude honored the veterans of our country. Many men and women of our community chose to serve. Be with our veterans, especially with those in need. May the purpose that inspired them to serve inspire us as we seek to build now into the future. Bless and keep safe our first responders and their families. Each day, they step forth to protect and respond to the needs of others. Grant them wisdom and compassion as they serve, and may they receive our heartfelt thanks. Today before us are decisions to be made that impact the offices and services of our county. Give us the grace to listen, discuss, and decide for the betterment of all. Each item that is before us, be they big or small, as together we work to build for tomorrow. In humility and trust, dear God, we come before you this day in Thanksgiving. We pray. Amen.
(Inhales) Good morning, United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, brother. Y'all can still come in if you want to get seats, if you can find one. Okay, it's 9:03 a.m. on November 12th, 2025. We're going to call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Gillespie County Commissioners' Court. All members of the Commissioners' Court are present this morning. We're going to move to item number three, which has received public comments regarding the Rogers Draw Energy Storage Project and the Marshall Springs Solar and Energy Storage Project in Gillespie County. We have some individuals that have signed up to speak on this item. Before we take public comments, I have a brief update I was going to give. There was a town hall on Sunday afternoon with a large turnout, larger than I was expecting, that was organized not by the county but organized by citizens. And I gave an update. I attended that town hall and gave this update. I just want to give the same update this morning to anyone that didn't receive that information. So, on October 31st, the county retained outside legal counsel to represent the county's interests related to these two projects. On November 3rd, the county adopted a resolution specific to the Marshall Springs projects. That resolution was very similar to the Harper resolution with the exception of additional language related to the county's flood plain or flood damage ordinance. Last week, I sent written requests to the governor of the state of Texas and the Texas Attorney General asking for a meeting with them or with appropriate staff in their offices to discuss what options and how we can take some action to try to address these issues, not only in our county, I mean, I'm sure they're, I'm sure these are presenting issues for other counties in the state as well. And then on November 14th, we have a, that's this Friday, we have a meeting scheduled with the state fire marshal's office here in Fredericksburg. I will be attending that meeting. Our county fire marshal, county engineer, I believe our legal counsel will be attending, and probably a few other personnel on the county or city side. We do have the best page on our website. For anyone that doesn't know, we are going to discuss our new website today, and so that information will be transferred or has been transferred to the new website. Locating will be a little bit different. There's currently a button right on the front, top of the front homepage right now. That information will still be available on the new website. That's all the comments I have on this issue, anything from the Commissioners before we move into public comments. Thank you. Okay, first speaker is Bruce.
Thank you. Good morning. And Judge Jones, I would like to thank you for your comments on Sunday regarding the Gillespie County intent to enforce all the provisions of the Fire Code. And thank you for the opportunity to assist you with these challenges today. I have brought a copy of the Fire Code so that we can all have a look at what's actually in here. And the item I would like to start with is a notice of violation, and that is on 1.16.1. And if the camera would zoom in, it's right in here. If you don't have it, we've got handouts, okay? And so, 1.6, Notice of Violation and Penalties, 1.16.1, where required, whenever the AHJ determines violations of this code, a written notice shall be issued to confirm such findings. Now, let me explain where the introduction there, where required, and whenever. What that means is that you don't have to catch them in the act. I have provided photographs of the ongoing construction that occurred, and Esther Schneider has provided invoices. So that has been accomplished, and we have determined that violations have occurred. And so that brings us to, a written notice shall be issued to confirm such findings. And so, at this time, Commissioner Cromer, since this is in precinct two, you're the Commissioner of Precinct Two, I am a resident of Precinct Two. I'm calling on you, will you make a motion to issue such notice of violation against the Rogers Draw project at this time?
I would defer to my legal counsel.
Okay, and then what's the basis for the deferring?
Well, my basis is because there's a difference between, there's been, presented to us, that there's been construction, and all the invoices were served demolition as well, so.
Okay, so, let me resolve that for you. This is state law. The state of Texas adopted this Fire Code as state law. The issues that have been presented are an interpretation of a local ordinance. State law has sovereignty over ordinances. And further, to go further on that, if you turn the page to the third page, it says 1.3.2.3, nothing herein shall diminish the authority of the AHJ to determine compliance with codes or standards for those activities or installations within the AHJ's responsibility. If you turn the page again, authority, 1.7.1, administration. The provisions of this code shall apply without restriction unless specifically exempted. And if you want to take issue with that word specifically exempted, I have you turn the page again, and there's an example of an exemption. On 1.7.12.4, the AHJ is authorized to exempt detached one and two family dwellings and accessory structures from the authorities, from the submittal of plans. So unless the exemption is specifically stated in the code, there are no exemptions that this code recognizes from any ordinance. So I ask again, will you issue a notice of violation against the unapproved, unpermitted construction that has been going on for four months at the Rogers Draw best site?
(Inaudible)
Okay, well, actually, I would like to take a roll call vote. And Judge Jones, do you agree that, what is your position on construction?
So, the invoices that were provided at the last meeting, I reviewed those. I sent those to our county attorney, I'm sorry, our county engineer, county fire marshal, copy our legal counsel, inside counsel and outside counsel. And I asked them to review that and see if they felt that that was sufficient to trigger, you know, construction as it's being discussed, to allow us to take any action under any of the applicable ordinances, whether it's our county ordinances or the Fire Code. I requested that they be as aggressive as possible within the confines of the ordinance. I got, I have not gotten a complete response from the parties. I did get one response from the fire marshal, had a question about what was being presented. So, again, if, if, if and when we can take that action, we will do so.
Okay. Commissioner Weinheimer, what's your position?
You know, with respect to what we can and can't do, I would defer to the judge and defer to kind of returning to our outside counsel. I can't interpret these formally.
Okay, Commissioner offers?
I as well am going to have to defer to our legal counsel because we have to abide by the law that's provided to us. And that's, and that's why we have hired outside counsel. I'm going to assist in this matter as a expert.
And Commissioner Yansky?
Same thing. Once you have a legal determiner.
Okay, now, if I could refresh your memory, back on July 14th, I first brought this to your attention. And at that time, the county engineer, and there were representatives of Cactus Construction here at that time, their claim was that no grading had occurred, therefore, no construction had occurred. Now, I have produced photographs, and we'll put them up here, but I have photographs and I have given you copies in the past of two bulldozers on site grading out sections of road. Both sections of roads had gravel laid atop them, and they subsequently were removed. They also conducted asbestos remediation at a house that had been existing for quite some time, and then they demolished that house, okay? They also cleared 13 acres plus of clear cut, grubbing, construction removal, okay? And so, at this time, I would just point out, that is my contention, as a retired professional engineer, I have worked in 45 states and in several countries around the world. This is construction. And I would follow on, there's additional, there's a stop work order on the next page there. Just so everybody is fully aware of what I intended to present here, on 1.7.15, again in this code, the AHJ shall have the authority to order an operation, construction, or use stopped when any of the following conditions exist. Work is being done contrary to provisions of this code, and two, work is occurring without a permit required by Section 1.12. So I ask you, has a permit been issued to the Rogers Draw project? Anybody? Okay, so no permit has been issued. It is well within the authority of the Commissioners' Court at this time to issue a stop work order because no permit is present at the site. I call on the citizens of Gillespie County. If you're interested in this, we will be presenting additional code information with Jay Shokat's group. Thank you.
Mr. Nash, David Nash. Your side, Friday, number four. Schneider, Esther?
Yes, I'm going to let Tommy go first.
My name's Tommy Betcher. You know, it's amazing to me that all you fellers up here were elected to represent these people. Not one of you have got the guts to stand up and say, "Yeah, we're going to do something about this." I'm telling you, I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed of the Commissioners' Court, and I'm ashamed of y'all. Y'all, this is not right. You stand up for the people because next election, you might not be standing up for the people. That's my bottom line.
Good morning. Judge Jones, thank you again for attending on Sunday. I know a lot of people in this room were very happy to hear your comments and see some of the things that are taking place. Unfortunately, Jay had a bad night, so with, as many of you know, he's an amputee from a serious motorcycle accident two years ago, so he is not here. He asked me to read this question. Commissioner Yansky, it's directed to you. It says, "You attended a meeting last Tuesday with the city manager to discuss a flooding issue near Friendship." Is that correct?
Yeah, I guess so.
Did you make the following statement after the meeting? "It is a done deal. There's nothing we can do, but the county got a wood chipper truck."
I made no such comment. I wouldn't, you know, the wood chipper truck, I, no.
Are you aware of any equipment that the county has received?
No. County has received no equipment from any of that.
Okay, thank you. That was his question. So, Judge Jones, also, at the last commission meeting, you were kind enough to present the Water Board's resolution that they wrote during the Kinder Morgan Pipeline. I would like to ask the court to write or to request from the Water Board a similar resolution. Would that be possible? I mean, if you look at what was written on the Kinder Morgan one, and it talks about the contamination of our tributaries, our rivers, everything else, I think that would be most appropriate. I did ask the fire marshal, who is also the Water Board chairman, if he would allow us to request that the Water Board write an amicus brief on behalf of the citizen suit. So, for you who do not know what an amicus brief is, it is basically written as a friend of the court, and it supports the position by the plaintiffs, which says, "We are concerned about the contamination of our water." And so, the Water Board would be most appropriate. I suggested that, that our attorney would draft it and pay for the cost, and he glared at me. Does anybody have any idea why he would glare at me for asking such a question? I mean, I think that is most reasonable. Does everybody else think that's reasonable? That's kind of a rhetorical question, but it's like, why would you glare at somebody who's offering to have it drafted for you? You should, as our fire marshal and the chairman of the Water Board, should be on the same side as the citizens, I would think. So, it was, it was, I mean, it was so obvious, I almost wanted to laugh. So, the next point I have is I would like to make a motion. Personally, right now, I am paying for all of the live streaming. The comments from the public have been great. They like seeing what you all are doing, and they appreciate having the opportunity to see what's going on in the county. I realize there's some technical difficulties that might be incurred in setting that up, but it seems that we have money to pay an outside accountant to help the treasurer do her job. I would think that we have, can find the funds to do this as well.
Are you requesting a video stream of the meetings?
Yes, please.
Okay. I think we had discussed that a few years ago, but we can renew that discussion. I did get your email, I did check with IT on the team's provision. I don't think it would work as presented. We don't have the right licensing or something, but we, I can talk with IT and we can explore what, what would be needed to do some kind of video.
Okay. Would everybody like that going forward?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Neal, might you give us an update? Have you heard from Peregrin on your letter?
I have not received anything back from Peregrin. I am anticipating the need with our outside counsel on 14th after the state fire marshal committee. And obviously, I don't want to get into the strategy, but there is pretty consistent communication with myself and outside.
Wonderful, thank you. Let's see. The next question I have is, Judge Jones, you mentioned the two on-call engineering firms. Might you tell us who they are and what the scope of their work and their qualifications are?
Listen, can you answer that?
Drainage, said your Michael Springs? Can't hear you.
No. You can come up here and tell everybody. It's the two on-call firms that you have currently. Who are they and what are their qualifications?
So, our on-call engineering firms that we have, we use Freeland-Turk Engineering, they're out of Spring Branch. Then Doucet is another on-call engineering firm. They have offices all over Texas. They assist with review of subdivision flats, drainage and road construction plans, flood plain ordinance, those permit reviews, right-of-way permit reviews. And essentially, we bring them on to review a project and just help with workload anytime that, you know, we have a lot of submittals or if we have any very complex submittals. They do these sorts of reviews for several municipalities and counties. Like I said, they're, they perform that work for the public sector, and they perform it on the opposite side as, you know, you know, other CIP projects for cities or counties, kind of that sort of thing. So, I'm not sure kind of exactly what it is that you're looking for, but, you know, they're, I'll have to check with the judge. I think that those proposals are public record, so if anyone's interested in seeing their full qualifications, I'm happy to send that information out to anyone who's interested.
What are the names of the?
Freeland-Turk Engineering and Doucet Engineering.
Doucet is D-O-U-C-E-T?
Yes.
Is that correct? D-O-U-C-E-T is Doucet. Freeland-Turk?
Freeland-Turk, yes, just said.
Is the other firm.
Thank you. That was, that was all we needed. I do want to ask some of these questions because the issue of litigation is real. We are looking at multiple lawsuits in the county to fight these systems. I am disturbed over some of the comments that you Commissioners have made privately about litigation. Commissioner Yansky, I specifically asked you several months ago about meeting with you to, because you are the newest member of the Commission, about meeting with you to educate you on the best, and you said, "I can't. I'm represented by counsel." That was right outside these doors. Would you please explain that?
We are under contract with an outside counsel, and without counsel present, I will defer meetings with them.
So, Ms. Neal said that outside counsel was retained on October 31st. This meeting was in August, or this, this exchange in the hallway was in August.
We have been in the process of doing, and Ms. Neal has also been our representative, so.
I, I think we all deserve an explanation as to why you won't meet with anyone, to be even educated on the topic, not asking you questions, but you're saying you're represented by counsel. That is very disturbing to us. Commissioner Cromer, your wife has told people in Harper that she's very upset that you've had to retain counsel and that she can't talk about it. Commissioner Weinheimer, you and I met in HEB, and I asked you to meet the same thing to talk about this, and you said, "No, I'm represented by, we have representation." Why?
I don't believe that's correct. I never met with you at HEB.
You saw me in HEB, you were picking up ice cream for your road cruise. Do you remember that? In fact, you acknowledged me first.
And what did you say?
You, I asked you if I could meet with you to discuss the education on this topic, and you said, "No, you're represented."
I don't believe I ever said that.
I can tell you, you did say that. But again, now we've got.
I did not say that.
Okay.
I did not tell you I would not meet.
So you're calling me a liar?
You're calling me a liar.
No, I'm asking if you said it.
I did not say it.
Okay.
I did not say I would not meet with you.
You did tell me you would not meet with me.
I did not say that.
Okay.
No, you made with me.
So, no, I, I don't even know what to say. The next question I have is, Judge Jones, you mentioned the two on-call engineering firms. Might you tell us who they are and what the scope of their work and their qualifications are?
Listen, can you answer that?
The drainage, the Marshall Springs? Can't hear you.
No. You can come up here and tell everybody. It's the two on-call firms that you have currently. Who are they and what are their qualifications?
So our on-call engineering firms that we have, we use Freeland-Turk Engineering. They're out of Spring Branch. Then Doucet is another on-call engineering firm. They have offices all over Texas. They assist with review of subdivision flats, drainage and road construction plans, flood plan ordinance, those permit reviews, right-of-way permit reviews. And essentially, we bring them on to review a project and just help with workload anytime that, you know, we have a lot of semitals or if we have any very complex semitals. They do these sorts of reviews for several municipalities and counties. Like I said, they perform that work for the public sector. They perform it on the opposite side as, you know, other CIP projects for cities or counties, kind of that sort of thing. So I'm not sure kind of exactly what it is that you're looking for, but, you know, they're... I'll have to check with the judge. I think that those proposals are public record, so if anyone's interested in seeing their full qualifications, I'm happy to send that information out to anyone who's interested.
What are the names of the?
Freeland-Turk Engineering and Doucet Engineering.
Doucet is D-O-U-C-E-T. Is that correct?
Yes.
D-O-U-C-E-T is Doucet. Freeland-Turk?
Freeland-Turk, yes, Doucet.
Is the other firm.
Thank you. That was all we needed. I do want to ask some of these questions because the issue of litigation is real. We are looking at multiple lawsuits in the county to fight these systems. I am disturbed over some of the comments that you commissioners have made privately about litigation. Commissioner Nienzki, I specifically asked you several months ago about meeting with you to, because you are the newest member of the commission, about meeting with you to educate you on the best, and you said, "I can't. I'm represented by counsel." That was right outside these doors. Would you please explain that?
We are under contract with an outside counsel, and without counsel present, I will defer meetings with them.
So Ms. Neal said that outside counsel was retained on October 31st. This meeting was in August. This exchange in the hallway was in August.
We have been in the process of doing, and Ms. Neal has also been our representative, so.
I think we all deserve an explanation as to why you won't meet with anyone, to be even educated on the topic, not asking you questions, but you're saying you're represented by counsel. That is very disturbing to us. Commissioner Cromer, your wife has told people in Harper that she's very upset that you've had to retain counsel and that she can't talk about it. Commissioner Weinheimer, you and I met in HEB, and I asked you to meet the same thing to talk about this, and you said, "No, I'm represented by, we have representation."
I don't believe that. That's correct. I never met with you in HEB.
You saw me in HEB. You were picking up ice cream for your road cruise. Do you remember that? In fact, you acknowledged me first.
And what did you say?
I asked you if I could meet with you to discuss the education on this topic, and you said, "No, you're represented."
I don't believe I ever said that.
I can tell you, you did say that. But again, now we've got...
I did not say that.
Okay.
I did not say I would not meet.
So you're calling me a liar?
You're calling me a liar.
No, I'm asking if you said it.
I did not say it.
Okay.
I did not say I would not meet.
You did tell me you would not meet with me.
I did not say that.
Okay.
No, but you meet with me.
So, no, I don't even know what to say, Commissioner. We are here.
Well, you're trying to say something, and I deny that I said that. I did not say that.
But three...
And then you're sitting here like, "Well, then what am I supposed to say?" I did not tell you I would not meet.
Yes, you did.
Why would I ever?
So will you meet with us now?
I'd be happy to meet with you.
That would be wonderful.
Nobody has asked me to meet with them with respect to this factory or facility.
I did.
You did not ask.
Now, if you misunderstood what I asked you, I don't know, but you were very quick to tell me you were represented by counsel.
I never did say it. Now you're adding even more stuff to it.
Wow.
Yes, sir. Look, I'm tired of you coming in here accusing us of stuff that is not true.
Will you meet with us to issue a stop work order today? Because there is no permit on the site. You have the authority to do that.
Yes. I told you earlier that I would have to get advice of our county attorney, our judge, and our outside counsel with respect to stop work orders. I am not an expert at issuing a stop work order. So you can talk to me about that. I'd be happy to go meet with them as well.
So...
You're a representative of the community, and you won't do anything about it? Come on. Did you not hear what I just said? Yeah, I did hear. You gotta have a lawyer to back you up. You want me to go take some steps that I'm unsure of just because of that? You're a county commissioner. You should. Yeah. So you want me to arbitrarily take steps that I'm not sure of and that we may not have?
So let me ask this question of all of you.
Let me relieve you of some of your concern. There are...
First of all, folks, we have a procedure. She's up there. Let her speak. If you're allowed to get back up here, then you can speak. But let's not be yelling from the audience. I think that looks very disrespectful on both sides. We're all adults. We're professionals. I get where you're at, but let's keep it to an orderly fashion.
Yeah, let's keep order.
There's information in here that gives you immunity. If you had just been meeting with us, we've had this for months. Okay, we'll get you back up here.
So, and that's what I was going to try and say, is that we have brought you code on multiple occasions for months and months and months. Let me ask this question. Have any of you read any part, piece, portion of NFPA 855 or NFPA 1?
I've read the things that Bruce brought to our court, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Neal, first.
I have as well, yes.
Okay. Judge Jones?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not familiar with that background.
I've read everything that's been presented.
So what are your questions about doing what has been asked of you today? If you've read those, they're pretty straightforward, and you've had counsel to confer with. This is where we are. And again, let me say, especially Commissioner Weinheimer, I realize you're upset. We are upset. We've been in this commissioner's court since the end of January, asking for help. We've brought you information. We've brought you technical information. We've had private meetings with you, with counsel, with the fire marshal, all of this. And it's now, all of a sudden, you're going, you've hired counsel to represent you. It says to us that now, all of a sudden, you're concerned more about your position than you are stopping these facilities. We don't like to be up here doing this. But people are going to lose their homes. You've heard testimony from all kinds of people. The Harper project is less than 1,000 feet from a K through 12 school with over 600 children. There's a daycare. It is also, I mean, the headwaters of the Peternalis. If we can do the things that were done for the Kinder Morgan one, why can't we show a greater effort in this? I mean, why does it take nine months and us standing up here, asking these questions, to get you to help us? You are our elected representatives, and without standing up for us, that is taxation without representation. Okay? Thank you.
Just as a point of clarity, I want to... Sure. There you go. Thank you. Just as a point of clarity regarding representation of the commissioners and the court, my understanding as the county attorney is that there's been outside counsel retained to pursue potential litigation for both of the potential or developments, the one in Harper and the one in the Willow City area. That is what the representation is for, is for potential litigation against those developments. The representation is not to represent the commissioners in their capacity as commissioners or the court. Okay? So I want to make sure that that's clear, that the representation that was retained by the county and is being paid by taxpayer dollars is to address what the residents are bringing to the court, so that that litigation can potentially occur. And I'll verify, but I'm not aware of any of the commissioners or the judge retaining counsel to represent them regarding this in their professional capacity or their personal capacity. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So why are every one of them saying that they gotta talk to their counsel? This is bull. These people right here were elected to represent these people right here.
Yes, sir. I think there's a misunderstanding that when, if commissioners are saying something to the effect of, "We have representation," what they're referring to is the attorney-client privilege that exists in communications with counsel regarding the potential litigation. And they're barred from sharing those attorney-client privilege communications.
I think they're scared to stand up and stand on their own two feet. That's what I think.
I can't speculate as to what they think or feel, but I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that attorney-client privilege exists, and the court being the client of the outside counsel. And in the interim before the outside counsel was retained and the court asked me in my capacity as county attorney to go beyond what my normal duties are to assist in this matter, that attorney-client privilege existed at that time as well.
That sounds like gibberish to me. That man right there said, and said that that lady was lying. I guarantee you, I don't think she was. I think he was lying because he's a politician. And I'm gonna tell you, come next election, you boys better hide for cover because y'all ain't done a damn thing. It's unreal what you've done to this community and this county. I've lived in this county and paid taxes for 30 years. Yeah, I'm not an old timer, but I tell you what, I know when wrong's wrong and right's right. I work for the largest construction company in the world, and I tell you right now, at ExxonMobil, I seen one of these battery stations start fire. The thing, one battery blew up and it started a fire. It burned for two weeks. Two weeks, they couldn't put it out, and they got hazmat. And y'all are sitting here with your butts on your heads. I can't believe it. It's a disgrace. It's what it is.
I would just like to bring some order back to the court, and everybody kind of take a breath and just listen, ask your questions, but take a breath so we can have some calm. The idea is not to have a contentious situation, but please be respectful in your questions. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Good morning, David Baker. Just again, standing up to voice my opposition against the, well, not every battery storage and solar project that may come up in the county, but especially the Marshall Springs project. That one happens to be, I mean, it's truly in my backyard, so it's very personal to me and creates probably a lot of disdain for that project for me. So appreciate efforts to stop these things. The other one is, I just, as echoed, we had a fantastic turnout at the town hall the other day. Really appreciate Judge Jones coming out and providing an update on the county's actions and taking questions because I could not have covered that that well. It was a big turnout, positive, a lot of positive comments come out. I've had somebody stop me at the wellness center. I didn't even know that was there, and I wanted to thank us for that. So anyway, thanks again, and appreciate y'all's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scudder?
Thank you. I'm here to discuss the other project, the Marshall Springs project. The three gentlemen that are representing the neighborhood most affected have, I've been blessed enough for them to give me wide leeway to discuss the drainage issue. I've also appreciated how much y'all have listened to me over the last three or four weeks. I think part of what the frustration we're seeing on the first project is it's not easy being first, and it seems like, to use a football term, they're getting behind the sticks. On Harper, y'all seem, everybody seems behind the sticks. So as lessons learned, I'd like to get, Marshall Springs, I'd like to get ahead of the sticks. And again, same question I've asked, I think, two or three weeks. Please, let's get an engineering firm on board. Please, let's make sure he's aware of the project, knows about it, spend a few billable hours, get him up to speed so that we're ahead of the sticks. And then mainly getting ahead of the sticks, like I've voiced many times, and y'all have listened very well. I want to get ahead of the sticks because of the clearing, and I've talked about the heritage oaks, the century oaks and all that. Only new piece to add today, or two new pieces to add to the clearing talk today. They kind of spin off of the Marshall Springs Town Hall we had on Sunday, and it's taken us a while to get up to speed on it because social media has to catch up with us, emails have to catch up. We gotta route it to the drainage guy. But we talked about clearing of these trees on the fluid property, and I believe this gentleman here, he kind of started my brain thinking, yeah, they will clear property line to property line. I've had a map up here where I thought they'd nibble away, but no, those trees cause shade. Shade is their enemy. So I do think they will clear property line to property line. And it's a different type of clearing than I've had in my mind, and y'all probably had in your mind when we talk about the clearing. We think rangeland pasture clearing. For a massive industrial project, engineered project with specifications, the clearing that'll be done, property line to property line, will be clearing and grubbing, which is different than we've probably all pictured it, probably different than I've talked about it. They will do clearing and grubbing in one operation because on an engineered project of this scale, your roots interfere with your subgrade operations, your foundation operations, your trenching operations. So if they jump the gun on permitting and if they jump the gun on plans, possibly before Kimley-Horn even puts pencil and paper, they could be up there clearing and grubbing. And the reason why I bring that up is the grubbing will then remove the matrix from the soil that's holding the soil on those slopes. First annual rain, I'm not talking about a historic rain, first annual rain will remove that soil, and underneath that soil will be hardpan surface that meets the definition of impervious cover. So they could technically create impervious cover without even having a set of plans, without having the hydrology study that we've been. So I'm saying just by clearing on that scale, totally different clearing than we're used to seeing in this county, clearing and grubbing at that scale on those slopes, they will significantly alter the hydrology of all four watersheds. I mean, some topsoil will stay, some topsoil will leave, and when that topsoil leaves, you've got instant pavement. So we're kind of standing back, waiting to get engineers on board so that Kimley-Horn has their hydrology study. But they could severely impact those of us like me living downstream before Kimley-Horn's even put pencil and paper. So that ties into the whole other speech we talked about, the heritage oaks and century oaks, is that we have to get ahead of this clearing operation with some kind of injunction something because they will alter the downstream hydrology before they've even studied the downstream hydrology. Second point that came out of our meeting, our town hall meeting, a gentleman named Paul got ahold of us, and, you know, it popped up in our mind, but we just didn't really think about it, is we do have, the clearing of that property will severely impact the golden-cheeked warbler. I know it's a federal thing, but it's the only bird that 100% of its breeding range is Texas. It's the only bird on the planet that 100% of their breeding is Texas. It's a very thin breeding range of which the fluid property is in it. Their habit, and it's not just the cedars, their habitat for forage is the upper third of hardwood forest and cedars. So you'll, some of the developers have recently used tricks like saying that the golden-cheeked warbler is adapting to suburban life, but this is not a suburban project. This is an industrial project where 1,000 acres of their habitat will be removed, property line to property line. I don't think any bird can adapt to no breeding and no foraging. So it's a federal piece that we need to get our hands around and just add that to all the other clearing items I've discussed. Thank you.
If I could, and I'll bring you some information that apparently your attorneys have not brought you. 1.9 liability, 1.9.1. "The AHJ and other individuals charged by the AHJ or the incident commander of emergency operations charged with the enforcement of this code or any other official duties acting in good faith and without malice in the discharge of their duties shall not thereby be rendered personally liable for any damage that could accrue to persons or property as a result of any act or by any reason, by reason of any act or mission in the discharge of their duties." And I would just point out again to the audience, we have been bringing information on codes over and over again. If they had just read this piece, they could have saved a little bit of money on the attorneys.
Thank you, everyone. That's all of the comments that I have, that individuals have signed up. Is there anyone that signed up that I... Did you sign up? Okay. Anyone else sign up that did not, that I did not call to speak? Are you asking to make a comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Tom Schneider. I'm precinct two, and I would like to add one thing to Mr. Scudder's very good study that he did on the drainage and this project not having any drainage study, which should be a stop. I was involved in development for my entire working career, one of which was very close to here, Lakeline Mall in Austin, Texas. And not only should the study include the quantity of rainwater or water that is coming off the site and containing it so that the pre and post conditions match, but it should also include the quality of the water coming off. Now here, you're gonna have some things that are gonna cause environmental issues, and so that water needs to be treated and ensure that the water coming off the site is every bit as clean as the water coming down from the sky. We were also involved on that particular project with the golden-cheeked warbler and the tooth cave ground beetle and the bee cave harvestman. We spent a year and a half working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife to make sure we had everything, every I dotted and every T crossed, so there was going to be no impact on any protected species before we were allowed to put, to start or commence any construction, including grading, including clearing, including grubbing. So I would ask that Peregrin and the project at Willow City be held to that same standard, and that was federal law implemented by the state.
Commissioners, any other discussion on this item before we move to item number four? All right. We will move to item number four, which is consider adoption of an amended resolution related to the development and construction of the Rogers Draw Energy Storage Project in Gillespie County. Just for context, at our, I think it was our last, it was a special meeting we had about a week ago, we adopted a resolution for Marshall Springs project. That included some additional language that was not in the Harper resolution, and so at that time, it just triggered my mind that we needed to amend the Harper resolution to incorporate that language. We have one individual has signed up to speak on this, Mr. Nash. You gonna make your comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
David Nash, precinct two. I did look at the amendment, and I'm fine with it as worded. So I'm good with that. I would like to say that I went to Menard's Commissioner Court meeting on Monday and was educated on their situation. They have a, a best that's on the property that's next to their city limits of Menard, where their substation is. It's just, it's the, it's on the border. It's right there on the lot line. So anyway, I'm also gonna be going to Mandera's tomorrow. And that's gonna be more of an education for both sides. Be, be getting educated on what they, what they're doing or not doing. And then, you know, you know, I always talk about the fire codes. So I'm gonna follow up with Menard on, you know, basically this amendment. I mean, this, this original and with an amended version. And then see where it goes with Mandera. And, you know, that's all I want to, just to give you a status on the Hill Country effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. So there's a draft of the, of the first amendment that I've passed out. I did put some copies on the table over there if anybody needs to review a copy. Essentially, it, it, in the recitals, it memorializes the February adoption of the original resolution. And then it notes that we want to make an amendment to incorporate an additional requirement that they provide documentation of the NFPA 68 and NFPA 69 compliance as required by the 2020 NFPA 855. This language was proposed by our outside consultant, the hazard engineer firm. Hazard Dynamics is the name of that firm. Dr. Eric Archibald is the principal that we've been working with on that, on this issue. So other than that, the only other, the only other operative language is that states that other than that change, everything in the original resolution remains in full force and effect.
Yes, and I have no objections here.
Are there any questions or discussion from the commissioners' court on the first amendment to the resolution? I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt the first amendment to the resolution requiring Harper Battery Energy Storage System Documentation Requirements as presented. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries? All right. Thank you for the public comments. That does conclude the Battery Energy Storage System and Solar discussion items for today. If it's a public meeting, you are welcome to stay. However, if you want to move on to other activities, I'll give you a few minutes. We'll take a, take a five-minute recess and y'all can move on. Thank you.